Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five Farmington School Board Meeting. We did have on the agenda a non-public session to go into at first, but that has been rescheduled or canceled, I guess, at this point. So we are opening up public session at this time. And we are excited to have Quinn Carter, who's going to be our co-chair. And Quinn is a seventh-grade student at Henry Wilson School. And we'll begin by Quinn starting us off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll hear from Quinn in just a little bit, but I am going to open up with public participation. Is there any public participation at this time? No, sir? Okay. I thought I heard you say you did have public participation. Okay. So there's none at this time. So we're going to put this down a little bit so you can be heard by the people at home. So tell us a little bit about how your school year has gone. You're in the last week. What are your thoughts?
Um, I think that it's definitely, it's definitely been a good school year, a very fun and enjoyable school year. I think like a lot of the most enjoyable moments that I probably had was maybe with like my friends, when we had like a concert at the school or like the play like that was put on by Drama Club. And I think definitely Field Day was very good today. It was very fun and all.
I see that Mrs. Palmer got all uniformed up today. How was her performance?
It was good.
Yeah?
Didn't see her around much, but I'm assuming it was good.
That pretty much sums me up.
Yeah, I think like, like a couple of the times before we had our, went after, well, yeah, before we had our computers. Um, not before, during when we had our computers. I think like a lot of times, like sometimes the teachers would try and like, play like a whole like class game with the computers. So that was really actually fun. After everyone rage quitted, but still, it was fun. Just don't recommend crypto hack on bluetit, but it's fun.
Do you have a particular subject that you really enjoyed this year?
Um, I think I definitely enjoyed social studies and science because of all the labs and because Mr. Ahadi, he's a really fun guy. He's a very funny guy. He let, he let people put whipped cream, Kool-Aid, and then Kool-Aid powder on him at Field Day. So that was pretty fun. After all the tug-of-war stuff. That was pretty fun.
What about, what are your thoughts about going into next year to eighth grade? Are you excited? Are you nervous?
I'm a little nervous because I haven't really met the teachers a lot, but otherwise, pretty excited. So, yeah.
Is there an opportunity for them to meet the teachers this week?
Yeah, I think it's tomorrow. They're going to do like a half-day schedule. And then for like the end, it's not actually a half-day, but for like the end part, they're going to do Step Up Day.
Nice.
So, yeah, I'm going to go get to meet the teachers with all my troublesome advisory students.
How does a mouse of babes?
She speaks the truth.
Yeah, hey. Do we have board members that have any questions for Quinn? As our co-chair tonight? Maybe something will come up.
Yeah, do you have anything, do you have any idea of what you want to do when you get older?
Um, not entirely. I've been like popcorn-ing from different ideas. But I mean, it's kind of relatively hard because I don't know where I'll actually get in life. But otherwise, yeah. Because it might be a little hard because maybe I'll apply for something, but I just won't get it. So it's all depending on how it goes in life, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's fair.
That's how I see it.
There you go.
That is fair.
If you need a summer reading suggestion, Quinn is an avid reader. I have borrowed one of her books right now. So Girl Gone.
Girl Forgotten.
Girl Forgotten. And so, yeah.
Well, because I saw the video and me and my friend decided that we were going to buy books from the, um, book, you know, the book thing. Yeah, Book Fair. And we decided to do a thing where I would buy some books and she would buy some books. And we would kind of like popcorn the books around because there's books that she liked and there's books that I liked, but she didn't have enough money. So I ended up getting the three books. And one of them was Girl Forgotten because we were kind of sitting together, we were chatting. I'm like, oh, we're like, we like that book. Might as well get it.
You ever got a little mini book club between the two of you? Swap off.
Maybe.
Cool. Anything else you want to share about your year?
Um, I can't think of anything else.
We're going to get into the agenda. So if something comes up and you want to say something, let me know, okay? All right. All right, new business. Uh, the bus CRF. Well, actually, before we do that, why don't we, there was one thing that didn't make the agenda, but we're going to add it because we discussed having it. And that's the preschool proposal, which we covered somewhat verbally at our last meeting. And Colleen, you were kind enough to give us a written proposal, which I'm sure you all saw. So anything in particular you want to highlight from that that's different from what we talked about two weeks ago or?
Um, I think we added in what families might do to contribute.
Some specifics about that on the first page for Proposal One. Um, that they will be requested to make donations to the classroom, then the school, and then the offer lunch in that order. That's one way that they could give back. And they can give back at the amount that, you know, feels appropriate for them. So we did beef that up. And I don't think there was anything additional. It was just packaging it in a way to kind of bring all of the ideas together and explain the rationale.
Okay. I had a chance to digest it more. And it wasn't that I didn't think it was a decent idea or proposal. I just wanted something to sort of sink my teeth into a little bit more.
Absolutely.
And certainly with Mrs. Doyle's input last week, at the last meeting, it was helpful, too. Do board members have any particular questions, thoughts?
No, I told Colleen I thought this was great. I think it's a great idea. I mean, obviously, my head was wrapped around it because I lived that preschool coordinator life in special education for so long. Um, so when we had chatted on the phone and then I had a chance to look at it, I just, it was very, you know, very well thought out. And I think it looks great. I think a lot of our students and families could really benefit from this, so. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any, any other questions? Is the board ready to make a motion to decide on this?
Well, I'm just noticing there's two proposal, is it or?
Two, I thought I would split it. Yes, two. One is shifting the funding model. And then the second one is shifting the schedule.
Oh. The intent is to do both.
Both.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Yes, but just keeping it separate. That way, like if we agreed to the funding, but not the scheduled proposal, you know, or vice versa.
But shifting the funding model is not going to affect our budget per se. I mean, it's going to, we're going to, we're using grant money.
Correct.
Yeah, I want to, I want to make that clear for folks at home. Because if we weren't, I would be hesitant of doing this mid-stream because, you know, we've already approved the budget. But I want folks at home to know that the proposal, if they watched it at the last meeting, they'd understand that. But that it would come out of title funds.
And in fact, I think you, the district will appreciate more revenue. Because if we're being honest, on average, the revenue is really only around $10,000. So $1,000 per regular ed student, if they go five days a week and they're four. But if they're three, it's 800. And then if they qualify for free and reduced lunch, it's only $250 a year. And so there are quite a number there in that, in that, under free and reduced lunch. So on average, $10,000 a year. So you would still, using this different model, we would be looking to increase the amount that the district's able to bring in to cover the costs of a preschool teacher, for example.
Any comments from you, Mrs. Palmer? Are you good with everything?
Yeah, no, I thought it was great. I, I had asked about the parent contribution part because I always think it's nice if parents have little skin in the game. So, hey, you know, you are kind of getting a free thing, you know, could you please donate to the classroom? Or, you know, if you don't have time to go and buy things, but if you feel like you would like to buy a school lunch once a week, you know what I mean? You could do it this way. We just really appreciate that. We are a community and it takes everybody. So I think that Colleen did a great job on that.
I think it's also important that our viewers know and our taxpayers know that there are several, several New Hampshire districts who have already transitioned to this, to this model of grant-funded preschool models. So this isn't like it's just something kind of out of the blue. It may be for our viewers listening at home who follow us. Um, but this is, this is, it's nothing new. So a lot of, a lot of districts are doing this. That way, we can get our, our littles, yes, into these buildings, which is important.
I'll entertain a motion unless there are other questions.
I'll make a motion to, to, do we want to do it? Sorry, I'm.
I think we should do it separately. I've got. I think I should do Proposal Number One to shift it and then do, just to make it cleaner.
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, so I'll make the motion to approve Proposal One, the shift in preschool funding to federal grants.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Doyle. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion to approve Proposal Two, which is the redesign program, schedule, and grouping structure.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey.
A second.
Second by Mrs. Doyle. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm really excited for our families.
Me, too.
Yeah. And the program and the preschool teachers.
Yes.
I know.
Really excited. Thank you.
It's really nice. And I have to say, while we're talking about preschool, went to preschool graduation because my nephew is in Ms. Milliken's class. Uh, she's amazing, by the way.
Yes.
Um, but it was, it was fabulous. It was so cute. But I thought about this as I sat there and there were only five kids in his classroom, you know? And so, which is great. Um, but I just thought about, you know, we could have, we can have a lot more littles in there with this possibility. So, but it was wonderful. They love those kids. So happy to see them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, to be honest, I do know someone who's in, um, value.
You do? Preschool?
Um, I don't know about preschool, but somewhere.
Yeah.
Somewhere in value, yeah.
Do we have, um, we did, we did, um, we were supposed to have reports tonight, but we gave the principals the night off because they're in the midst of busy weeks and, you know, with graduation on the heels of that and everything. So, um, they have the night off tonight. Um, gosh, we really do have a short agenda, don't we?
We do.
Very short.
It feels weird.
It's like summer vacation.
I know, right?
Almost there.
I, I guess I would like to say thank you to everybody involved with Farmington High School graduation. I thought last chaplain graduation went extremely well. Um, you know, I don't think everyone realizes the amount of work behind the scenes that Cheryl Moody does. I think I tooted her horn last year, too. But she really is that sort of institutional person that has that knowledge of how we've done a lot of the traditional things at graduation each year and how to practice it and how to lay it out in the program. And of course, thank you to Kaylee Varley, who was the advisor of that class. And both our administrators, Mr. Coro and Mr. Moser, thought they did a great job. I also know that Amber Healy and Diana Jansen are behind the scenes doing things, too. Uh, I think Amber had more of an active role this year than she has in the past. Uh, KJ Cardinal and I saw Cowboy Rick was there taking photos as well. So a lot of great photos were taken. Uh, the Farmington PD and the ambulance corps and EMTs were just well-represented in case there were any kind of emergencies. Um, it just was a really nice event. It was so organized that it was succinct and it wasn't terribly long. Those events can get too long sometimes, especially in a warm gym. But everything just went so well. Um, and the student speeches were phenomenal. We had a valedictorian, a salutatorian. They had such different styles, but their messages were really cool. Salutatorian was animated. Animated. So congratulations to Class of 2025 and everybody involved in pulling off graduation. Is, we're back to public participation. We have some non-public business tonight, but we don't have a lot of.
Do you want to talk about the bus? Because that's.
Oh, sorry, I skipped over it to go to her first. The CRF, yeah. An updated bus fleet list, yeah.
Um, I think that Gil is coming with the fleet list.
Oh. Oh, he might have thought because five thirty, non-public.
Right. So I think before we go there, I did put in your folders an expenditures report, our recent expenditures report. Um, it was run this morning and it's worse than, than what you see. So this morning, it was 141,809 dollars that we were in the red. And now, after paying some bills, it's 193,736. So the magic number is 213,000. As long as we can keep it under that, we'll be okay. Because that's the lighting fund that will offset it. Um, and it's been tough because, like I said.
Do we have another payroll?
We do. That is encumbered. So, um, but it's been really, really tough on a lot. I know that I spoke with Sharon about, you know, we paid some bills for people that took courses. You know, that's in our contract. We can't, you know, deny that. So that's that piece. So then that leads us to the request for the money for the bus that we purchased. So that way, we can take that out of the CRF and put it back into the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that, that I know this expenditure report just keeps getting scarier and scarier. We, you know, we are, of course, getting our allocation from the town and whatnot and the reimbursement from the grant. So it's sort of, we just are just holding our breath constantly to get through the end of the year.
Do we have any more expected revenue? Probably not at this point.
Not really. No, not really. So I did speak with Kathy Seaver at the town and she kind of helped me see the spreadsheet for the CRF. And we have $122,000, 122,132 dollars in that account. We did purchase a bus for 93,400. I brought the invoice. So I would need you guys to vote on how much you want to take out from that.
Well, we need to take out that amount.
Yeah.
This is the bus, the bus that we purchased earlier. Yeah.
It was purchased in July, I believe.
Yeah. What about, did the checks that we voted on for the CRFs make it to those accounts?
No. They, well, they're there. They haven't been cashed yet.
Okay.
Um, she, because they were waiting on the minutes from the meetings that it would, they were approved on. So they got that and she was going to deposit them.
Okay. So is that 122?
With it, no.
Okay.
I don't remember if you guys have voted to put some into.
I thought we did. Yeah, I, I thought we did, but I'm not, I, at this point.
So that would kind of replenish a little bit.
Right.
I think also I'd like for us to have an opportunity, for the entire board to have an opportunity to speak to the two consultants that we're working with, with MRI.
Yes.
Part of me anticipates that we might have to do that in a non-public personnel session.
Yeah.
Um, but if we don't have to, we can do it in a public session. Um, it's the public's money, so. But I just want to be mindful of whether or not personnel is mentioned in some of this. Um, so if we can sort of gauge their availability, and we don't, it doesn't necessarily have to be one of these nights. That's probably more difficult for them. But even if we can squeeze a meeting in somewhere in an afternoon or something or during the day, if we had some board members that had availability.
Yeah, is there a day that they're maybe, or that they're both here or even one?
At least one will be here on Wednesday, this Wednesday.
And they don't, I mean, it would be nice to sit down with them. But if one can call in and the other one can, you know, zoom in or whatever.
So the next school meeting is July 7th. And then the 21st.
Are you able to call in on that? I wasn't sure what you said.
Um, I might be able to because I'll be on the Atlantic Ocean.
Okay.
We're in the same time zone, not on the other side of the internet.
So I'll see what they have for availability. But if you're available on Wednesday, Rita will be here. And I'm not sure if David will or not because he's been in Canada, so.
Okay. All right. Do we need to make a motion? Someone want to make a motion?
To, I'll make a motion to take.
Or.
Or.
Do we have to do?
No, well, are we agents to expend on that?
I know. Do we have to do, do we have to hold a public?
But you still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
We should.
I think we have to hold a public, right? Because this is what got us into the last. I think it has to be on the agenda and listed, like the CRF, right? And we have to keep it open for the meeting? Or my, I could be, I could be wrong.
It was something to do with, last time we did anything with lessons.
And it had to do with the CRF?
Well, that, yes, this is why we're doing it so late. But if, do we need to do it before July 1? Yeah.
I was under the impression I didn't have to post for a public meeting for the CRF. Maybe we don't. But I don't.
Didn't we do a public hearing originally?
I thought you did. I thought you did last summer.
Um, I mean, we can consult the minutes and schedule it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says, it does say, I have it, that a public hearing is required.
Yes, we did have a public meeting. We just hadn't voted on it.
Can expend the monies.
But we did have one. We hadn't voted on it. That was the issue with the trustees. And then we did do that and we had the minutes because we had to submit the minutes to the trustees.
Yeah, because we have to hold the meeting, the public meeting prior. It's RSA 19820-C. So prior to expending funds from a CRF.
No, because we, we voted on that and sent the minutes to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So as long as we ended up holding that, which I think we talked about it, that was the concern that Mr. Brown had brought to the table.
Yeah.
And then we end up at the next meeting, putting it on the agenda. We discussed it. So now it would just be the next step. So we technically had the public hearing prior to expending the funds. I just would need to look to see.
Do we want to?
Do you have the minutes? Do you, do we have the minutes for that? Do we know where they are, when it was?
August, August 5th.
August 5th.
Yeah, the problem was, we did that part. We didn't take the vote after. So, which we ended up doing.
Yeah.
Because we had to send that to Manny.
Do we want to check with Eric on, before we make this motion?
Let me just look here. Um, well, we won't, we won't get him tonight, more than likely.
No, I know, but I'm just, I mean, if we get an answer tomorrow.
Yeah, we can call a brief meeting and, yeah.
You want to do that?
Yeah, we can make sure we do this.
Okay. Wait.
Thought we already did.
Hold on, I'm just, were you going through the minutes?
I was going through some emails.
Okay, I have the minutes.
So in April, we, August, approved the deposit.
Okay, so, okay, this is what, sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. But we, uh, before Mackenzie left the district, she did not deliver the minutes to Manny.
So.
And I had forwarded that to you.
Mm-hmm. We, but for the, for this bus CRF or the other minutes? The ones to, for the checks? Because that has been delivered to him.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, maybe that's what that was, yeah.
Those have been.
That's right, okay.
So we had the public hearing, which is what is required according to the RSA, on August 5th. It's in the minutes that you opened it with that, Joel. I'm looking at those minutes right now.
We just didn't vote at the end of it.
Right.
Right?
And I swear we held another one.
And I understand we didn't vote on it, but all that's required, and I'd have to dig deeper into that RSA, but we're just required to hold the public hearing prior to expending funds. So we held the meeting. You opened it to the public prior.
Right.
So now we should be able.
But the trustees wanted proof that we voted, which we didn't that night.
Right.
And so then we had to vote. And I'm almost 100% positive we voted on that. It's really sad that I'm getting so old that it all blends together. But that's just where I am.
So the April 7th meeting is the one where we released, we motioned to release the checks.
What was it?
April 7th, public session.
Right. But that's a different, that was, that was, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, wait. This is on November 4th. We did another public hearing for the buses. And I'm just looking at the minutes. Um, says, Mr. Shagnon stated the board needs to vote. An invoice needs to be presented to the trustees and they want the meeting minutes. You closed the public hearing with a motion. I made the motion to purchase a bus at 93, whatever, with 92,000 from the CRF and the balance of 1,400 from the general fund. Motion approved, four-oh. I will call vote.
Right, and those minutes were sent to Manny.
Okay, so what, what are we missing then?
I don't think we're missing anything. But is that 122 reflective of that deduction?
No, they haven't deducted it yet.
Haven't deducted, we haven't gotten the money.
Oh.
So we already made the vote.
Right.
We've already voted.
We've already voted, we held the public meeting, that's what I, yeah, we held the public meeting, we went back, we talked about it, said they didn't, we didn't do it the right way. We went back, we held it.
Yeah, all right, then we don't have to vote tonight, already voted.
Yep.
Don't know, I just have to tell them, please give me the money, ninety-two thousand.
Probably have to send them the minutes from that.
Yeah. It was eleven-four.
Supposedly sent, but I would double check on that.
Yeah. Yeah. And then the original public hearing was August or?
Uh, no, it was, um, we did it, uh, the whole kit and caboodle again on November fourth.
Okay.
Yep.
The right way, the quote-unquote right way, okay. Cause we never voted, I never documented the vote on the August fifth one.
What is the updated bus fleet list going to do for us tonight?
Well, nothing.
Stacy requested it, just so we had.
When he was here last week, I just, it was just for informational purposes.
Okay. Which that can be sent electronically. All right, is there any public participation at this time? Sir, sir, if you, if you are gonna speak publicly, I'd ask that you take that microphone and, that's okay. Just state your name for the record, where you live in town, and then the folks at home can hear you there, otherwise they can't hear you, okay?
Oh, here comes Gil.
Okay.
James Rathbun, twenty-four Green Street, Farmington. You go and introduce yourselves earlier, so I wanted to introduce myself too. I'm James Rathbun, um, I've been in Farmington for five years now. Um, I'm also on the Community Action Board of Directors, I'm on the Head Start Board of Directors. Um, I just wanted to come and see the board meeting tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Come anytime, we love visitors.
You picked a good one, nice, short and sweet.
Gil, we've just been talking about the CRF and stuff, um, do you have the updated bus fleet list for the board? We, sorry, we started earlier than anticipated because we didn't end up having the non-public that we had posted. We're close.
Us too, no.
Thank you.
I can look on with Stacy.
Oh, he's, I think he's got.
You have enough, okay.
Thank you.
See there, we get mileage and so far with the expenses on our future vehicles.
Yeah, we, can you come over here, Gil, to this microphone? We can hear you, but people at home can't.
Okay.
What I've done there is just to complete maintenance, mileage, costs, for repairs. And it also has the VIN numbers of each bus and van. Also, we have the police vehicle.
We've got those two that are, were taken out of the fleet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I figured I'd keep them in, in my books, just till they're officially gone.
Are full-sized buses?
The ones that say bus two, three, four, those?
Two, three, four.
Well, I didn't.
Okay, four is a mid-size.
Okay. What is that, like twenty-five?
Yeah, it's about forty-seven passengers.
Forty-seven?
Yeah, five and six are full-size. Fourteen is the, um, handicap bus with a wheelchair. And we have fifteen and sixteen full-size, eighteen is a mini-bus.
And you said two and three are full-size as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
What, what's the capacity of the full-size seventy?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, I thought it was seventy-three.
And that's little guys, fifty, I think it's, uh, it's fifty-one with adults.
Yeah.
Sorry, is bus fourteen the wheel, the handicap, the wheelchair accessible, the handicap one, is that, that's not full-size though?
No.
Right?
That is a fifteen passenger.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
And what about the mini?
Mini is also fifteen.
Fifteen.
Any other questions for Gil about the fleet?
I do have some, uh, issues right now. Thirteen has gone to the shop and the estimate is, uh, I'm looking at fifty-five hundred to get it fixed.
What's wrong with it?
The, um, four went in with a sensor relay, uh, problem, that's two thousand plus labor. And you have, uh, number three, a bad door, won't pass inspection, in order, they have to replace it. It's seventy-five hundred plus labor.
Which one was the one that gave us trouble, uh, project graduation?
Number four, this one. The forty-seven, that's the one, the, um, sensor to the, um, DEF pump went out. It had none, it's, that's what happens, you know, it just, we all have these little sensors that DEF takes. I could have taken them off.
Does the bus CRF, I can't remember, does it, is it just for the purchases of buses? Or is ma, can we use that for maintenance?
I don't think it's for maintenance.
Yeah, I just can't remember the verbiage.
Anything, any other questions for Gil?
But this is helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Gil.
I do have one more, sorry.
Yeah.
Are the ones? Um, is it van seven and nine, the ones that are no longer? That are like obsolete or?
Yeah, after Thursday, they're gone.
Okay.
I mean, you could use them for events.
Right.
With the board's permission, would you allow me to make a phone call to a personal friend who works with the state police and works specifically with, um.
Transportation.
Transportation now, he's, is an alumni of Farmington, it's Craig Gagny, actually. Um, is the board okay with me, I just, I, I'm, I'm still uh, baffled by, you can get a waiver that they're safe, but if you didn't apply on time, now they're unsafe.
Well.
Right, but you can still use them for?
And you can still use them for events, it still baffles me.
Yeah, well, that's, according to the commissioner, uh, he talked to the, uh, federal transportation, federal transportation said they're unsafe, can, if they're gonna use them, you only use them for events. I too say, wait, if they're unsafe, then why can I use them for one thing and I can't use them for the other?
Right.
Yeah, it's just baffling to me. Um, so, I don't know, I'd like to just talk to him about it.
Yeah.
Reach out to him and just have a conversation, maybe he can make it more clear for me to understand, that's all I'm looking for, really. Um, okay.
All right.
Um, thank you, Gil.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, any other public participation? Anything else from Quinn Carter or co-chair?
No, I'm not.
You picked the right meeting to come to, this is a, this is a short one. Enjoy the rest of your week, got only what, three days left, two and a half, something like that, three and a half, three and a half.
Who's counting, right?
Yeah.
She is now.
Uh, me too.
You're right, you're right, three and, three and a half. Any exciting plans for the summer?
Um, I think, other than going to see a movie with my grandma on her birthday, I'm not sure yet.
That's cool, what are you gonna see, do you know?
Grandma's birthday?
It's July, July tenth, yeah, July tenth. Well, I, I didn't know if it was July or June, but it was July tenth and we're gonna go see, uh, the new Jurassic World rebirth movie.
Oh, nice.
She wanted to go see it and, and there's no Jaws movies coming out, so, she's obsessed with Jaws.
Fiftieth anniversary.
Yeah.
It's an exciting summer.
Probably be playing somewhere.
Then if there's another Twisters movie, she also probably invited me to that.
Thank you, Quinn, for being here tonight, have fun tomorrow in eighth grade, meeting your eighth grade teachers, and have a good summer.
Thank you.
All right, uh, our next meeting is scheduled for July seventh, unless we have to, for some reason we find a reason to have something that we squeeze in between. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session one under RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, two, A, B, and C for nominations and resignations. So moved by Mrs. Johnston, second by Mrs. Lozey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, folks.